I just want to know, are your eyes open and are you breathing? That's it.
All right. Critical race here. This special meeting of the Judson Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 8:07 a.m. I'm very pleased that you have taken time to join us this morning. The script says evening, that's why I had to pause. In compliance with state government code in open meetings, tonight's agenda, or today's agenda, has been appropriately posted. We have established a quorum. I will call roll. Shetan Keen?
Present.
Ms. Eaton?
Present.
Ms. Knoyer?
Present.
Mr. Macias?
Present.
And I, Jennifer Rodriguez, am present, and next to me is Dr. Ball, our superintendent. We will get started. So, do we have any citizens to be heard?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So, we will go to item three, discuss and review information on proposed 2022, '23 fiscal year budget and compensation plan. And before we get started with that, I'm going to name that I have a hard stop at 11:30 because of a work commitment. And so, with the board's permission, what we discussed is that, because we might not have a quorum if I leave, or something like that, that we just stop at 11:30 with however much we've gotten through. And anything else will be carried over into future meetings to make sure we get to all of it. Okay? All right. I'm seeing nods and agreement across, around the board. Okay, all right. So, we'll get started with the new information on the fiscal year budget and compensation plan. Dr. Ball?
First of all, I want to thank the board. Open for a second. I'm happy to talk. I want to thank the board for Thursday's board meeting. We have received numerous thank yous. We have received lots of comments. You could almost feel it in the air, I think, on Friday, where employees were happy and excited about the courageous actions that the board did. And I would think that by our audience in the back, they probably give me some head nods, that people were happy and pleased with our decision. So, thank you. As I had mentioned on Thursday, that was just one component of the budget. And I know that this meeting is designated for program review, and we had already agreed to three program reviews. And I promise you, whether it's today or in June and July, you will hear all the program reviews. But I also wanted to mention that you have a binder. You have a binder where staff has put lots of time into putting this together. It is not anything that you have to review today. Please take that home with you, look at it, and then we could do follow-up questions. I'm also going to be sending out an email today, asking Betty to set a time for me to meet with each board member as we move for a new beginning, is the way I see it. We're fighting for a new year. It's a new beginning for all of us to do some amazing things for our district. And not that we haven't, but every year brings about more challenges, and we want to be prepared. And I'd like to hear from each board member, expectations, questions, concerns. Just truly give us the opportunity to have a one-on-one that we haven't had, and to be able to talk. But what I was previously going to say is that the budget has lots of components, lots of components. And what you heard at Thursday and you approved was just the raise. So, we want to continue to have those components talked about. May 31st being another budget workshop, June the 8th, another budget workshop. Then that gives Mr. Atkins some time to post some things in the newspaper that has to be posted. I won't remember the date, but it's June something, where we'll finally take it for approval, and then start all the work for the business and finance to get those budgets out to staff, and we get ready to start spending on July the 1st for the beginning of the year. Want to publicly, again, thank Scott. Scott has been a new addition to our office and our department and our district, and he's been fabulous. What we, yes, absolutely. What we did is, everybody's aware that we did a TASB study. So, we did a TASB study. We looked at their recommendations. We looked at some of the changes they proposed. The nice thing about TASB is that they compare us, they compare us to other districts, and to see where we need to fix things, look at things, add, delete, and those types of things. So, we spent lots of time looking at that, and you'll hear about some of those things. So, Mr. Atkins and I are kind of doing this jointly today, but the most important thing is to ask us questions, give us feedback, so we continue to plan for May 31st. Any questions at this time before we start? Okay, everybody should have this hand out, and we will start then. Bill, you can go first.
President, Dr. Ball, board. So, going, what we're going to do today is we're going to review the May 16 budget workshop items. We're going to discuss.
I think you might, because it might be off. Excuse me.
Sorry.
There, there.
There it is, okay. We're going to review our May 16 budget workshop items, discuss our stipends and substitutes. That's really the one portion of the comp plan that we have not done. We'll look at our year-to-date budget. We have an updated look at that. We'll review the tax rate, not much change there. We should be getting an update from the appraisal district at the end of the month. We'll look at what, right now, we're projecting for next year's budget, and then we will definitely take any questions, comments, concerns from anybody. As Dr. Ball said, this is our fifth budget workshop. It is the 21st. We have another one scheduled on the 31st. So, today, my goal would be to get input and feedback on substitutes and stipends, and then on the 31st, bring back the entire compensation plan for approval. And then, then we would have that done. And then on the 8th, the goal is, June 8th, the goal is to try and have the budget about 90%, maybe 95% done, when there might be a few tweaks here and there. And then on the 22nd, because on the 8th, I have to publish, I have to have the information to the paper the next day. So, any changes we need, we make on the 8th, I have to have ready to go to publication. And then on the 22nd, we would have our public hearing and adopt our budget. So, kind of looking at what happened on the 16th and the board meeting of the 19th, is we approved incentive pay. And so, what we approved was that teachers would get a 6% raise with a $1,000 incentive in December. That would be ESER funds, the incentive would. Professionals would get a 4% raise on the midpoint, and a $1,000 winter incentive from ESER funds. All other staff would, auxiliary, clerical, police, bus drivers, they get a 6% raise on the midpoint with a $1,000 incentive in December out of ESER funds, and then an additional $1,000 in June out of general funds.
Wait, what's this $2,000?
What, that's the 1,000 in December and the 1,000 in, right? We just added it together. Yes, ma'am. So, and so, again, the ESER incentive is $1,000 for full-time employees, 500 for part-time, which we have very few, and $400 for our long-term subs.
Bill, is the next bullet, I think, you all know, I'd love to read the Facebook comments, even though I'm.
Here, my.
I can't hear you. Oh, I want to get, I didn't want to leave it on.
The next bullet is not a change, right?
No, on the health insurance? No. And it doesn't mean it won't be a change. Again, our health plan runs January through December, and we just haven't had enough data yet to see how that's going on the self-funded part. But we're hopeful that we might be able to either increase that or drop rates, one of the two, depending on how it goes.
So, what is the estimated timelines? I know I keep getting asked, when would we know if it would increase? Because I think that a lot of people are under the assumption that, you know, so much is going to have to go to insurance. So, any timeline, any discussion in regards to that?
I do not see an increase at all. I don't see an increase.
And that would be a good thing to share with employees, because I think that a lot of people are under the assumption that we did this because it's going to increase a lot. And I'm hoping not, because, and please correct me if I'm wrong, from this year, when we started with the new self-funded, if my memory is correct, it was actually reduction.
It was. It was a 7% reduction in rates.
Right. And I think sometimes people forget that, so I just wanted to share that publicly with everybody, that last year, it was reduced, and we are very conscious about the insurance, and we know that it's expensive, but we're hoping that we'll be able to leave it the same or better.
I do not see an increase. I mean, right now, what I'm tracking is, will we be able to decrease? So, that's my goal.
So, the point would be that those raises that we gave, that people would truly see those as a raise and not go to the insurance.
Well, it'd have to be some insurance increase to take over that whole raise that we're giving, so.
Yeah.
We're not going to do that.
I know.
Does anybody have questions or comments about that insurance component, or anything you've heard that anybody wants to address? I'll take that as a note.
I have a question.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Mr. Macias, if you could share that mic with Ms. Rodriguez?
Of course, of course.
And speak into it, thank you.
Will know definitively by December or January what that rate, to your point, was, would be for next year?
We will actually probably, we'll actually probably come to the board in October.
Okay.
Because that's when we're going to start open enrollment. So, we'll probably come to the board in October with the rates for the following year.
Okay, with that, so we can know definitively then?
Yes. And like I said, this is our first year, so we don't have a lot of data. I can share that the first two months were positive, March was negative. And, you know, typically, June and July and August are going to be the heaviest claim months, because people are off and have procedures done, go to the doctor, and those kind of things. But like I said, we are tracking that.
So, when you say negative, is that a comparative to the previous year numbers?
There's no comparison to the previous year, because this is our first-year self-end. So, I'm saying that January, February, we had more premiums than cost, more revenue than expenses. But in March, we had more expenses than revenue.
Spring break, teachers do things on spring break.
Yes, yes. And so, that's what we're tracking.
Thank you. I'm not suggesting this, just putting it out there, sort of like in the universe, but the biggest issue we've had with insurance is that we can't uniformly apply support to insurance to our employees, because only 60% may be using it or even less. So, it always leaves out the other individuals that are not using it. So, what if we, again, just a suggestion, I haven't thought it through, what if we still did something to support insurance in the future? Not saying now, because we did give great raise, but we actually gave sort of the 40% not using our insurance, a stipend that equals what we're doing to employees that are on insurance. That way, we can make 100% support in that area. Because as Dr. Ball had mentioned, that is a complaint that we always hear, that insurance goes up. So, strategically, for next year or the year after, look at still giving support in that area if it goes up. My hope is we don't have to deal with this, but I think a lot about how can we help those employees not on our plans? So, we should legally be able to do something like a stipend, or are there possible things that would negate that?
Do you, by people not on their plans, do you mean people who've chosen not to use our insurance?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, that's their choice, and that does put more money in their pocket, because they're not paying those premiums.
But they're probably paying it with their spouse, or their, whatever it is, they're still paying it somewhere.
Right, a lot of people have military insurance and don't pay anything for it, you know? Or their spouse, like, I have my spouse on my insurance because it's cheaper then. So, I don't, I don't think that that would actually, like, those people are already getting more money than the people in the insurance plan.
Well, I know that if I was an employee and I'm on my wife's plan, we're paying just as much as if I was an employee does. So, you know, so for every instance like that, I can assure you, there's an instance of opposite of that. So, again, just academic questions, you know legally if we're permitted to do something like that, or if there's barriers. And I'm not suggesting this year, or, but just as we go forward, if the insurance issue does not alleviate itself, that we have some options to think about.
Yeah, I don't know about a stipend, but I, you know, we do the $355 across the board, right? Some districts actually scaffold that, and they give additional dollars if you're employee and children, or employee and spouse, or employee and family. And so, the contribution, I guess, from the district is different based upon what your category is that you choose. And so, that's a very, I'm not going to say it's common, but there are districts that do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bill, I'm sorry to keep interrupting you, but one of the things that's very important.
Your mic.
I'm putting on my.
I'm sorry to remember, and I still forgot. Is in regards to the mental health services, and we're always trying to remind our employees that we have that benefit. And I think that's been, I don't think, I know, it's been a benefit that has been used a lot, and always trying to still continue to get the word out to our employees of that service, because it's something that's completely confidential. We never know about it, we don't hear, and I know that there's always some stigma that goes to that. But in this time, I, you know, encourage our employees to use that. And I know that Bill came to me months ago, and we actually increased that, so if you could share a little bit about that.
Yeah, I mean, typically, we were seeing 16, 17 a month, and we had that budgeted in our employee services budget. And Lisa came to me and said, "I'm out of money. I'm out of money." And that's when we started putting the additional into ESER, so we're using some of those ESER funds to supplement that budget. And so, right now, we're averaging 50 a month of our employees that are utilizing that service. So, bad that they have to utilize it, good that we're able to provide it, right?
And really, that was the intention of the ESER funds that the state gave us, to deal with things that happened from the COVID situation. And I think that a lot of the stress, the anxiety, the pressure that people feel are from things that have happened to them personally after COVID, or just sometimes dealing with change. Everybody deals with change very differently.
And if I did this per year, that stayed the same?
That did stay the same.
And it's not just for the employees, it's their family as well.
Oh, yeah.
So, if they have a child or a spouse that needs to go, we see those as well.
I think that's an amazing service.
So, again, the ESER incentive will cost us about $4 million out of ESER. So, if you remember the budget that we looked at last time, it didn't have that. So, I'm going to be moving some of those funds to make sure that we have that ESER for this year and for next year in our ESER budget. And again, the auxiliary gets the 1,000 in the winter and the 1,000 in the spring. And really, the only stipulation is they have to be employed by September 1st, and then by November, and at the end, November 30th for the winter one, and then January 2nd through May 31st for the spring one. There's no attendance or anything else, it's just they have to be employed. So, one of the deals, I believe Mr. Macias asked us, is to, what, what does the incentive do as far as a percent of raise? And so, Scott went in, and he looked at the midpoint, right? So, these are midpoint calculations, because every single part of the scale would be a different percentage. If you went down the scale, the percentage would go up. If you went up the scale, the percentage would go down. But at the midpoint, with the incentive, the police would have a 10% increase. Custodians would have a 17% increase. Receptionists would have a, or, the, we use the bottom, the lowest pay grade on each scale, so I want to say that as well, right? And so, we say receptionist, but it's the 303, would be a 15% increase. And we did do a secretary at 307, just to kind of do a comparison. You can see it goes down to 11%. Our computer techs would have 11%, but our network techs, who are professionals, they only get $1,000, they get the 6%. And then the professionals would be a 6%.
And this is a question I could have asked, like, months ago, probably, but I just want to clarify my, that I'm understanding a midpoint raise correctly. So, we're taking the midpoint of whatever salary scale, and we're saying, okay, this, they're getting, for example, a 6% raise, we calculate what amount that is, and then we apply that amount to every step along the way.
That is exactly right. And the reason we do that is to keep the scales in balance, because if you just did a 6% on what they were making.
It would start to spread.
Yeah, your scales would be really spread out.
Okay.
And so, that's why typically, TASB and everybody, you know, they recommend doing it at the midpoint.
Yeah. So, because I think an employee might then get their first paycheck on the new scale and think, like, this isn't 7% or 6% of what I was making before, it's because of that, that it's, everybody's getting the same dollar amount.
Everybody gets the same dollar amount. Yes, ma'am. That's exactly right.
And Bill?
Yes, sir.
The one that I wanted to see was transportation. That's the oldest category you didn't put in. You have to tell them, are they 303s?
Scott, do you remember what that is? I know we calculated, but I can't remember what it is.
You're pretty fast.
You don't remember? I, I, I want to say it was very, in the, it was between 10 and 15. I do not remember the exact amount. We looked at that last night before I went home and passed out.
If you could, if you could send that to me formally, I just, yeah, I sound like I need it right now.
We can get that for you.
But that's what I'm interested in seeing.
Yes, sir.
We'll send that, Mr. Macias.
Thank you.
So, just wanted to look at our fund balance, kind of over the last five years, and how it has increased. And again, the last two years have not necessarily been for fiscal management, they've been due to COVID and not doing normal things that we would do, and not being able to be, I'm going to say, 95% staffed, because we always have some openings. And like I said, typically, when we were in the March to May range, we might have 40 openings, and right now, we have 170. So, just a different time this year.
I have a quick question about that. Sorry, I'm like, full of questions today. But, you know, when I work with my budget at work, we're not allowed to transfer money from payroll spending to non-payroll spending. Is that the same? So, like, if we have vacancies, it's not like we can say, oh, we can use this to, like, buy some laptops? Is that the same here, or is that a transfer that is allowed?
There's no restriction on transferring. The restriction is, if I go between a function, such as 11, which is instructional, to 12, which is our libraries.
Right.
Then I have to have the board's approval to do it.
Correct. Okay, okay.
Yes.
But I, either A, I didn't understand the question, let me make sure, hold on. Either A, I didn't understand the question right, or I didn't understand the answer. So, this is what I'm thinking you're asking. So, let's say, in my superintendent budget, I had a budget for three personnel, and I didn't hire them, okay? That I could then go and put that money into staff development and go to a lot of staff developments? Is that what you?
I mean, that's an example.
Right.
But, yeah.
But, but I don't, but in our system, I want to make sure I'm clear, in our system, I don't think our principals, directors could move that money.
No, only, only I'm allowed to move out of payroll.
So, that's what you really wanted to know?
That's what I was asking, yeah. Like, if money is in payroll.
It's very far and few between. It's typically when we've overspent in an area, and I'll go and see if they have some personnel dollars to move over there, just to make sure that the budgets are. And if you look at my program view, you'll see some of the budgets are negative. And so, we'll be bringing a final budget amendment to you in June to make sure that our functions are correct.
Okay.
But I just didn't want you or anybody to walk away thinking that a principal, director, myself, anybody, would be spending that personnel money.
No, and I would never assume that people, if somebody was trying to, like, keep something vacant just so they could spend it somewhere else, like, but the root of my question is more so, in this world in which we have unwanted vacancies, does that money automatically then, is it going to go into fund balance? Or if, if, like, people do have some freedom to, like, cover some where they went over?
Sure, like, in SPED, you know, they had excess payroll, but they have to contract out to get those services. So, then.
Okay.
We would move funds over so they could do that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, sir.
The, excuse me, I did want to get a sense, sort of like what we see here on the fund balance, is the audited balance, I wanted to get a sense of what goes back into the fund balance in unused positions, I guess, the ones that remain vacant. I think you talked at our last meeting that we had roughly 9 million in positions that were unfilled. I'm trying to quantify now what that typically looks like. You mentioned that it's 5, 7, 9 million, it's in that range, but I'd like that to be in black and white, because I'd like to see what that trend looks like over the last five years.
As far as the vacancies?
Of what we carried on payroll that went unfilled, yes.
Okay.
And so, the reason why is because, obviously, that plays into it. We never operate on 100% staffing. There's always a percentage, 90% are filled, or 85, or 95. But that reflects money going back to our fund balance. For the sake of me understanding, since we're probably never going to do a budget where we take those positions out, which is what I mentioned, we're always going to leave them in there, because there's a comfort factor there, then I'd like to know what we typically have coming back, based on actual data, like, every year, what went back in unfilled positions, at least three years, if not five, just so that I can see that trend and understand that.
Yeah, can I suggest, because again, what we look at at the end of the year for compliance is at the function level. What you're asking is the object level, right?
Like, the 177 positions you brought that were unfilled this year?
Yeah.
Previously, when we were looking at the end of the year, what unfilled, what did that come out to? What was the value on it?
I think what Mr. Atkins is saying is that it's very difficult to pull a dollar amount, but what I think might be easy to pull is a fill rate over, like, what is our?
We can actually pull a dollar amount, but I would prefer to pull all the objects, because just looking at one might skew the data, right? Because one may be a surplus and one may be negative. And so, we can pull all the objects, which are, you know, there's five of them, and we can get a historical on that for you.
I just, we're going to be doing this again the next three years, and so I want to understand what that trend typically looks like.
Sure.
That would be helpful.
What's really difficult for us, and I know Mr. Guidry's been working on it, is because we switch systems and because we lost so much data with the cyber attack, is actually getting you a number of vacancies. I think we are able to give you last year's and this year's, is that correct? But going past that, it's very difficult to get number of vacancies. I can get you dollar amounts in payroll, but I, it's, like I said, it's very difficult to get number of vacancies.
That would just be helpful. Thank you, if we could have that in the future.
Sure.
I appreciate that.
We also have our ADA down there, just as a comparison, and I do want to remind everybody that, remember, the 2021 school year was a hold harmless? Even though we went down, we were held Even though we went down, we were held harmless at a higher level for funding. And this year, the state is holding harmless the first four, six weeks periods? And then the last two, we're using actual ADA. And again, that's going to somewhat artificially inflate our revenue. So just a reminder when we start looking at those type of things. So now, what we've put in is, is kind of the compensation plan. Again, there's no action today. Today, we can kind of, I'll let you briefly look at these. If you have any questions, it's fine. The big goal today is to get through subs and stipends so that we can put all this together for you and bring it on the 31st for adoption. And then that lets us really move forward as far as working on payroll for next year. So this would be our teacher pay scale. Again, beginning teacher, 57,362. Ten-year teacher, 61,282. And a 20-year teacher, 64,482. Scott, what are the numbers for last, or for the current year? I know the beginning teacher is 53,712. I remember that number. So again, about a $3,600 increase on the starting? And the 10-year is what?
Currently, the 10-year teacher is 57,632.
Okay.
$380.
And 20?
20-year teacher is currently making 68,32, $325.
Whoa, 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 68?
No, 60, 832.
Oh, oh. I was going to say, wait, wait, wait.
Like, how, we took money away from them?
Okay, okay. Again, it should be a $3,650 raise on the scale. And then we have the stipend on top of that. I mean, the incentive on top of that.
I, I have a little question.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it's not a little question, okay. Get the mic. Are we making sure that, like, we have the scale here for the teachers from beginning to all the way up to 41 years? Are we scaling out other departments as well? You know, custodians, bus drivers, you know, so that, to make sure that we don't have somebody who just got hired because we had that, you know, increase to bring in more bus drivers, that we don't have somebody who just started, you know, making 50 cent, 25 cent more, or than somebody who's been with us for 20 years?
And here's what I'm going to say, Ms. Eaton. What we did is, because it costs when we do stuff like that, right?
Okay.
And so what we did this year is, when we get to the bus driver scale, you'll see, it was all over the place. We had years there was no increase. We had years there was 4 cent increase and 11 cent. So on the bus driver scale for this year, we put in 20 cents in between each year. I know it's not what people want, but again, there's a cost with doing that. And so what I would prefer to do is then come back next year and look at maybe the auxiliary scale and say, okay, can I adjust that? And so it just kind of does over time. I know for the past two years, we have been doing that on the teacher pay scale. Just trying to put a little separation in between years of experience, because some of them were $50, right? And so I think the lowest one we have now is 200. And, and we, we can't do a lot, because if you just mess with one or two, it's not bad. But if you start messing with 10 or so, then you have to adjust on the top side of that and the bottom side of that.
And the bottom side.
So.
Do we give step increases?
Yeah, I don't know if they're necessarily step increases, but, I mean, they do move up the scale as they go. So they do move up the scale as they go.
And Bill, to follow that line of question that Ms. Eaton has brought in, it is, it is a difficult task, I know, to adjust salaries for, for every employee in a category. But naturally, we, we, I feel a commitment to do something to ensure that we're valuing, valuing our employees from, from year one, but those that have the experience, year five, year 10, and so forth. And not too long ago, we did do a strategic shift to give teachers in the five to 10-year range some more support. I don't, I can't remember exactly how we did it, but we focused on that. And I remember Marco was here. And we, we said, this is where we're losing teachers the most, so let's do something. So that was great. But now, it's in our most experienced teachers, it's one topic, have some employees some concerns of not feeling valued. They appreciate the raise, that's a value. But when there's a $7,000 differential between starting pay and a 20-year teacher, that, that kind of gets people thinking, how valued are we? So that coupled with the transportation conversations about, again, and custodial conversations where supervisors are just making maybe a dollar, two more, or whatever the deal is. Could we then look at, just like we did with the incentive, the ESSR funds, look at support there rather than addressing, doing every salary, increasing it? As you said, if you do 10 of them, that just starts to really put everything out. In times like this where we have maybe that ability to support it, what would then putting a stipend type of thing? For example, I don't know the answer, for example, like teachers that have 15 years experience will get a bump of, you know, 300, $500, something like that, based on their years of experience. We just would have something. But it wouldn't go from maintenance and operation funds, it would be stipend related.
Like, on their year of service? When they get five years' experience, they get like a bonus or something for that year?
Something like that, yeah. Again, just totally putting it out there because I don't know, but I'm thinking through, what could we do just to ensure we are doing something? Because there are two factors to consider. One is that, are we competitive in that pay grade? I mean, do we make sense with all the other districts? And then secondly, as a thank you, have some sort of other value added to that? And again, I hope that would make it easier than, than having to go in and adjust everyone's salary based on it. So just.
Yes, and I was just going to comment, as we've been, as Bill and I have been going around to talk to different employees and things like that, we've been hearing different things that the district either used to do, or they hear other districts do. So when, once we get to the part about our committees, in regards to the retention committee, looking at something like that, looking at other incentives such as, from what I was told, the district used to a long time ago, giving it an incentive that if you weren't absent, you would get, it was maybe $300 or something.
Yes.
You know, and, and looking at what would be those little perks that we could do for the retaining and those employees that, that don't miss work, that, that truly don't miss work? And having those little carrots of, of good things for our employees. So definitely, that's something that, you know, we might not be able to do for 2000, you know, 22, 23, but certainly our committee will be looking at to see, what could we bring to the board in the future to really add that value and say, we do value your attendance, your longevity with us, and call it maybe even a longevity type of incentive.
Well, I do appreciate that, and I know that's something we'll work through this entire year. So I'm looking forward to that conversation. And obviously, two things, just evaluate if it works. The whole goal is we put the money, we need to see if they're, if they're, we have more people at 100% attendance.
Right.
But I like the direction, and I think it's important. So, any comments, Bill?
Yes, I just want to reiterate, if we did that currently, we could use ESSR funds. But then going forward, when ESSR was gone, it would be M and O dollars that would have to fund that. I mean, there's not a, necessarily a separate pot. Now, I believe in '24, '25, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, or Dr. Saunders? We should be able to have, for the teachers, teacher incentive allot, is that right? Teacher incentive allotment dollars. And of course, then we would have to, as a district, have a process to decide how those dollars are distributed.
Yeah, a good thing that I'm just putting out in the universe would be that if people would maybe advocate to the legislators, that it'd be nice to, for us to keep our ESSR dollars, because we could, we're, we're really using them for some great things. So it would be very nice if, when they go into the next legislative session, that maybe a consideration like that is made for schools to keep the ESSR dollars, because we're using it truly to help our, our staff. So just putting it out there.
And I'm going to get on my annual soapbox about voting.
Yes.
Because we have to have legislators in the legislature who would, who are friendly to public education. And for me, I am a single-issue voter when it comes to that. Are you a, a, a candidate for public office who supports public education? And then you get my vote. So putting that out there in the universe, too.
Definitely.
Yes, ma'am. Again, like I said, I, I'm not going to sit here and read all of the pay scales, you know. The police, you know, starting scale, we did definitely increase that more than what Tasby recommended with the 6% increase. That was one of the areas where Tasby did say that we were kind of low. So it was nice to be able to bring that up. Again, our auxiliary, the starting salary, Dr. Ball is kind of like me, she likes round numbers, so she said, no, it's not going to be $14.96, it's going to be $15. I said, yes, ma'am. So.
I'm okay with that.
So starting $15 there. And our clerical was in the same situation, so we made it $16. Our IT scale, one of the things Tasby recommended was expanding this. So in our current comp plan, it goes through pay grade 406. But when they looked at the job duties of, everybody lumped into 406, it was not comparable to the market. So they did recommend adding 407 and 408. And so that's what we have done here.
Did those titles, like, job titles already exist, but we just had them lumped into 406? Just in determining who moved into those scales?
Yes. Most of them did. I, I can't remember exactly if all of them did, because I think they may have been a word changed here or there. There's so many administrators and managers and stuff in there. But I know Lacy was real specific, and Tasby, like I said, when they did the comparison about that, everybody in 406, some had much more responsibility than others, and that it should be split out. And then our, our admin professional scale. Here, one of the major changes, and I think, Mr. Macias, you asked about this, in 507, you'll notice that we have A, B, and C. And this is for elementary principals, and it's based upon their snapshot data from the previous year. And it, it's about compensating people that have a larger campus versus people that have a small campus. And so that's what we kind of did, we scaffolded that.
I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about a couple of these things. So campus fluctuate in size, you know, all the time. So in order to be fair and...
Can you turn on?
Oh, gosh. Thank you.
Thank you. In order to be fair and not be changing salaries every month, we decided to base it on the PEEM snapshot date. So that's why I wanted to, to share that information on there. But what I really want to go back to is 504. I'd really like to go back to 504 and talk and have a discussion about that. So throughout the training that we started with Patricia Leadership ISD, the board has made it very clear to me in regards to how important the academic goals are for our campus. And you've also shared with me, is, tell me what you need, Dr. Ball. Tell me what you need. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the specialists for curriculum and instruction, and let you know that at this time, I'm truly on the fence about this. So right now, they're listed there, but I might be coming back when we do this on May 31st and be changing that one. And I'd like to explain why to the board and have a conversation. Our teachers need support. Our teachers need support. Our teachers, A, we hire new teachers. Even if you're not a new teacher, the way I used to teach back in 1994 is not the same the way teachers have, that students are different. So I want to have the best people for these jobs. This, right now, I'm not convinced that this salary truly would be able to bring us the right person. The reason why I'm also on the fence is because if I had my perfect world, I'd want to increase this, but also have a director for secondary that would help us with this, and a director for elementary that would help us with this. I want to make sure that when we start the next school year, we're really infused with a lot of support for our staff on how to teach. Those goals, my goal is to come back to the board and say, we've already met those goals before the five years, and we need to already raise those goals. But I don't think that I can do that with the little support that we have right now. If you remember four years ago, when I first started, we were in a deficit at that time. And because I didn't want it to affect the campuses, this building right here took a hit, and I, and I didn't replace a lot of positions. Asking somebody to do K through 12 for curriculum, that's a very heavy lift to do. So we know that we need to do something different in that area. I just need a little bit more time. I'll have it more time to bring you something better by May 31st, but I wanted to plant that seed in you and let you know, we have to do something different in that area. So I'd love to hear questions or thoughts from the board about this. And if, and I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but Mary, if you want to add, Sessi, you used to do this, if you want to add, I don't mind you speaking up, please don't be shy, the board wants to hear from us.
Please.
I will say that we are facing in this next school year, the star redesign. And that means that the students in our primary grades and in our middle schools are going to be faced with doing more informational tests, more different, the test is bumped up. The rigor for those grade levels, K through eight. And so right now, and they bumped it up in the areas of social studies and science. So those informational texts are being pulled into the reading test. And the kids are, are going to have to write about what they read, and these are some of the things that our kids have not been doing for, most of the test has been objective. And so when you're looking at those kind of things, we're going to have to prepare our teachers, and we've been working on this, but we're going to have to prepare our teachers to be able to teach at the level of the rigor of where the test is going. Having a social studies specialist that's K through 12, and not having someone that is K through five, that isn't, that was an elementary teacher, understands that you have to teach all subjects in elementary in a self-contained setting, then be able to direct how they're going to pull in those social studies teacs, and then, and then grasp them into what they're doing in reading and writing, to prepare our kids for the level of the rigor that they're getting ready to go to in '22, '23. And so at this time, where we're standing right now, we have a K through 12 social studies specialist and a K through 12 science specialist. They are expected to write the curriculum for all grade levels. Both of them.
That's a lot.
And, and that's a lot. I was a curriculum specialist, I did six through 12, and it was a lot. I had Ms. Conoyer with me, she was doing K through five at the time.
Pre-K.
Pre-K through five. And so when we looked at the star redesign, and Sessi and I have been talking about this quite a bit, even before I came on to curriculum in February, when you are looking at where we're going with this star redesign, and what is going to have to happen in order to support our teachers, to prepare them to teach our students, then we need someone that has the experience... to prepare them to teach our students, then we need someone that has the experience in K 5, really pre-K through 5, because we can't wait to this testing grade, third grade.
Third grade.
In elementary, we have to start this process in pre-K to prepare the students for what they're going to have to face in third grade. In addition, the social studies teaks are changing for elementary, and it's going to require more, and they're changing them. They were already going to change, but now they're adding another layer on top of that to respond to what is happening with the STAR redesign. And so when I look at things like that and having the experience as a curriculum specialist, I did a good job because I was a secondary person. And so me, I taught middle school and I taught high school. So being able to write curriculum for that was easy for me to do. But I would have struggled if I had to do pre-K 5 because I don't have an elementary background. And I strongly feel that with where we're going with this STAR test and where we need to go with our kids' performance, that we're going to have to have individuals that really truly understand the grade level that they're in and understand what the teacher is facing in the classroom and being able to provide that curriculum for those teachers in order to prepare our kids for testing. And beyond.
So to synthesize the ask, it would be, this is not, you're not bringing this into the budget quite yet. This would be in the future?
No.
Or you want to do this now?
Well, not like now, today. But by May 31st, I do have to make a decision to do something different. And I wanted to share this today because you're going to say, well, you didn't even have this. Right. So I wanted to share that this is where it's been at. I can tell you it's not working, so if I continue to do this. So, but my decision is, A, do I ask for the full, perfect thing that I would want? And that being the director of elementary and the director of secondary with, instead of specialist coordinators? Or do I just ask for half of my ask, which would be to move the specialist to the coordinators? That's what, and Sessi would like to say something, right?
I would just like to add a case of that.
Yes, yes, of course, of course.
So just, I, of course, support everything that Dr. Topin just said and then would like to just add for some context and some background. Currently, some of the work that happened at the beginning of the year, when we started discussing, or when you all started discussing initially the board goals and we set a board goal back in the fall, we were already working towards that. And one of the things that the specialists did is in grades three and in grade seven, not only did they write the curriculum to start matching the redesign because that redesign conversation has been happening already for several years. So we knew what the target was. And so not only did they write the curriculum, which is a great task because this is grassroots, we don't purchase. We look at our data, and that's where we start enhancing the curriculum, where we see that our data indicates our teachers need more focus. But writing the curriculum is just one part, and it is a very heavy lift. Then there's the, how do we help teachers implement the curriculum and talk about that? And in that, then our specialists go out and in the fall, they arrange to touch every third-grade classroom, reading. And then the math specialist touched every third-grade classroom for math. The one secondary specialist touched every seventh-grade classroom. And they model the specific strategies that will help them yield the outcomes that we want. So I know it may not sound like a lot, but when you think of all of the third-grade classrooms that we have, when we think of all of the middle school classrooms that we have, and in addition, still support our five lowest-performing campuses on a weekly basis or bi-weekly basis, there really isn't enough time to then just continue. That's just that P. Then they also have to build the formative assessments to ensure that what they are writing, what they are showing the teachers to execute, then they assess it. And so when you think about that, I can honestly say that the work that they are doing far exceeds what a specialist does. I've worked in a system where there is a specialist and there is a coordinator. And the coordinator will then coordinate the system, coordinate the drafting of the curriculum, coordinate the support that is provided by the specialist. And then there's specialists that are out there just in the classroom. They're in the field implementing what is in writing. And so when you think about that, I can honestly say that the specialists here have done a lot. But it's just one person, and in some areas, we don't, yes, no.
So right now, the setup currently, there's specialists per core subject? K through 12, is that kind of the setup right now?
So for science, we have a specialist doing K 12. For social studies, we have a specialist K 12. We currently have a vacancy. We have a director of early literacy who has really expanded herself to do everything elementary and nobody else in the reading at the elementary, which is where we even have our reading board goals. And in math, there is a one math specialist K 5 who is actually moving on. So there's going to be a vacancy there. But to truly fill those positions to match what the board is asking and to help fulfill those goals, you know, it's not properly resourced from what I think we aspire to become, right?
And I can tell you, having done the position myself, there's a burnout factor because of what you're being asked to do. I was there for four years. When I left, I was replaced by two people. There was an early, you know, pre-K 2 and then a 3 5 because there is a huge difference in instruction in the primary grades versus the upper elementary grades. The methods that you go about, it's the difference between, you know, actually learning how to read and then going deeper and deeper in the third through fifth grade where the materials that they're reading and understanding and writing to are much more complicated and much more advanced. So it's different, teaching somebody to read is different than teaching them to read deeper.
Yes.
The comprehension, right. So, and that was, you know, back in 20, early, well, 2010-ish. And so here we are, 12 years later, and they keep bumping up the rigor on the test. They keep bumping up the teaks are continually being changed and...
Or number of teaks are increased.
And so things also get shifted from one grade level to another grade level. And when that happens, then sometimes the teacher has to teach two years' worth of teaks in one year because they moved something from above down to them, and they added it on to what they would normally have taught. And if you don't go ahead and teach that, then the kids never get it. And that's, especially in math, it's something very fundamental that could really impede comprehension later. So it, being a specialist is a very heavy lift.
So we currently have two, is what you're saying?
We have one, but they do one for each content, but then they do K through 12.
K 12. And I could never, ever have done. We coordinated very well together to really look at making sure that that vertical alignment was there. But I could not have done what she did because that's not my training, that's not my background. So, you know.
So, like, I'll start by saying I'm very supportive of it. Like, you all have made a very compelling case. And so then to, like, synthesize what you're asking, it is, we're only talking about the line that under 504 that is specialist curriculum and instruction, right? Where it's not the whole slate of specialist. Okay. So that particular line would be moved from 504 to 505?
Right. So what, but what I'm really saying, what I'm really saying...
And creating, splitting some new positions.
So what I would like is a little more time to meet with, I'm going to have my own little committee of Sessi, Dr. DuHart Topin, a couple of principals, and Dr. Saunders, and say, this is the time, and I realize that we're going to come with a plan of perfect to kind of medium to, you want us just to continue to do the same thing? And I wanted to share it at this time to say, well, Dr. Ball, why didn't you give us a heads up? I wanted just to give you a heads up to say, we cannot continue to do the same thing unless you want me just to get those types of results.
And you're saying, and then your super ideal situation would be to create two positions in the 508 category, director, one for secondary, one for...
Right.
So you'll come...
By May 30, yes.
Okay, with, this is what the cost of that would be.
Yeah, this is what the cost, I'm going to include the ROIs for that and say, this is how we can really move our district faster to meet those goals that I think that the board would want.
And we did have at one time, a director of secondary and a director of elementary. Yeah, and, you know, trying to help balance the budget, those things got... And when you look at a district our size and you compare central office, we are more than bare bones. Mr. Macias?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure it out. I have a lot of questions. Naturally, what I want is excellence. I want to be the best district in Bear County, period. And we've never been the best district in Bear County, and we're just being real. So whatever we did in the past, whatever we've done, it hasn't connected. So I like the spirit of what you want to do. I will support what you're doing. But there are some things that concern me that I just want to put out here that we need to be careful of. This is my third administration. We have a tendency to create positions and never go back and evaluate if they've made a difference. Then we get stuck with a process that we've never went back to evaluate. So I'm going to ask that we do that evaluation with this in the next three years to see if it's working. And we'll know it's working because we should see better results in STAR. So that makes me feel at ease. So I got to make a mental note, but Dr. Ball, make a mental note as well that we're looking at that. Secondly, I still believe that students are different. And so we create this position with a curriculum, the students interpret it differently across the entire district. So I feel like there has to be some strategy, too, to support students in other campuses that might need it. And it may not be with this position, but, Dr. Ball, if you're going to bring something, either tell me what we're doing currently now that's addressing it because students that come from a more impoverished background will have more challenges, doesn't matter what the curriculum looks like, than some in other parts of our district. So we need to have something that addresses that, too. And that's separate from this, but it's all aligned. It's all similar. It's all the same. And then, of course, you mentioned, Sessi, about we don't purchase. Should we be purchasing curriculum instead of having us write it? And I wanted to know that comparison. Do other districts actually purchase the curriculum?
If they're, if they're from district to district. Usually, small districts that don't have a CNI team and only have just directors purchase curriculum because there's nobody then to manage it. Bigger districts, I can tell you districts that are more successful, write their own curriculum.
I wonder if, and this is by no means a mandate or anything, but I know a couple of districts that are hiring similar positions like, or that have created similar positions like this. They're tying it to S R funds so that they can test the viability of, if that's something they want to do long-term. And it says in the job description, this is being paid out of S R funds, which expire at this time, with the possibility of making it a permanent position if it's found to be successful and necessary. So that might be something that helps us do exactly what Mr. Macias is asking is like, say if this is leading to our success and leading to achievement of the goals that we want, but then also lets us back out and transparently with the person taking on the role in saying like, okay, look, this didn't lead to the outcomes that we're looking for, and it's not, we're going to try something else for the long term. I don't know. I mean, I might be giving Bill indigestion by suggestion. So that's why I gave the asterisk at the beginning. We don't have to do it this way, but I do know that there are districts doing it that way.
And I do know districts that do that, too, for any title fund position, that if titles, funds go away, so does that position. But the human aspect is always still difficult.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. No, and I'm not saying that we want to do it that way, but it's...
But we appreciate the suggestion. But today, we do know that we will start working on this. We have been talking and working on this. But timing, just so many things going on at this time, we didn't have the plan completed, but wanted to just put that out there so the board knows that there'll be something different when we come on the 31st.
I support it wholeheartedly. It's ironic, God, you know. I love knowing people, and it's just strange. My son-in-law actually is working for the company, oh, sorry, sorry about that, that's grading the STAR test. And he's doing the, I guess it's English, seventh grade is English, or writing or something?
Writing.
They have to write, yeah, and the conversations we've been having. And thank God he's not grading Texas. But, you know, he's been asking me some questions about, you know, what exactly are people teaching these kids? Because, you know...
It's not evident did the writing properly.
Yeah, yeah. First of all, they have to learn to write, okay? But, yeah, and so all this is really bringing up some of conversations. Oh, God, they can't even write. So to write a paper, I mean, write a paragraph, but you got to write first. But anyway, yeah.
You got to start that in pre-K.
Lord have mercy. But, yeah, my son-in-law's been asking me some questions along this whole line. So, yes, I support it wholeheartedly.
I think that we could all talk about the writing and the reading. And one of the things that I look forward to changing for next year is every teacher is a writing teacher and a reading teacher. I don't care if you teach P E, C T E, and this is something that we've all talked about. Everybody is a writing and a reading teacher. In order to make the gains that we want and surpass those, everybody has to be on board to be a writing and a reading teacher.
When did they start, not here, thank God, this thing with printing?
With printing?
When did they stop using cursive? I wasn't aware of that.
They never did. It's still in the teaks. Yeah.
So, okay, okay, because, yeah, that's the other thing, he's like...
But after, after, I think it's third grade, students are allowed to choose, according to the...
Well, please, let's not choose, Justin. Let's keep using cursive writing. At least be able to sign your name.
Yeah, a lot of them can't.
Hey.
What I would finish by saying is that, you know, ask for everything that you know you'll need.
Yes.
I'm willing to support something, just with the caveat that we have that assessment. And I do like Ms. Rodriguez's idea of S R funds, which means if we have to hit the gas and pay more than we typically would on a general funds for payroll, I mean, I'm willing to look at that because this is our time to do that. So I would be supportive, just to let you know, but don't hold back because at the end of the day. And then one other thing I would finish by saying is that, you know, that we include our teachers in this and that we literally, I mean, I know you guys have done so, but to address that sector differential, you know, just to get that input and be engaging for them, I think could be helpful if that's not something you guys are already doing.
And also know that I don't want to forget two major groups that also need the support of the curriculum, and that being special ed and the bilingual part, too. I cannot forget those things, you know. Anytime that we do something, you know, and I think Justin is very good at this, but I've worked at places where you buy something and then later on you find out, oh, but it didn't come in Spanish. Well, why would you buy something that didn't come in Spanish, you know? And I'm not, and it's not happening here, but I know of other places. But just know that we have that conversation, too, that we will make sure we're cognizant of those two things. Because I think it falls in line to what you said, our students are all different. Our students are all different, and we need to make sure that we provide it for all of them. Sorry, Bill, but I got it. I just thought it was important to mention to the board.
Me, too. Can we take a break? All right, we're at the halfway point. Can I, can we take maybe a five-minute break for people to take care of personal needs, and then we'll come back to it? All right, so we'll take a recess at 9:16. We'll return at 9:26, no, 9:21. No, 9:21.
We're starting, oh, sorry.
It feels right now.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, the time is now 9:24.
Okay, so that pretty much is the pay scale. And I'll work with Dr. Ball if we're gonna make any of those changes, and we'll bring that back on the 31st.
Is your mic on, Mr. Atkins?
Your mic is not on, sorry.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay. The last scale is the driver, the bus driver scale. And again, you'll see here that we did start at the 1667 and put 20 cents in between each year of service. Okay, now we get kinda to the meat of today, which is the substitute and stipends. So when we were reviewing the substitute, last year we brought to you, we have a high... We have a hard time getting subs on Mondays and Fridays. So we did a differential on Mondays and Fridays from the regular sub-pay. But we didn't adjust the long-term sub. So the long-term was the same as the Monday and Friday rate. So what we did is we added $10 to each of the areas for the long-term. Going down to the administrative sub-rate, the... Last year, an elementary admin was $200. And I know we had a situation where we tried to get somebody, and they wouldn't even talk to us for $200. So we have increased that to 350, and then at the secondary level, 400. And that's around 80% of what a starting admin would make.
And so just to clarify, like, this isn't if the principal needs to be out for a day, because then the AP would step in. This is only if there's a vacancy or someone's on leave, okay?
Dealing...
Correct, yes. This would be a long-term situation, yes.
Okay, that answers my question.
Yes, it would be long-term, like, I think, I think Ms. Davidson moved from Coronado in the middle of the year to Metzger, I think. And we had Mr. Alerne come in and serve for four months, five months, until we hired a principal. The other thing is, some districts, because of bus driver shortages, are offering their coaches to drive, or having their coaches drive. And so, like, in the morning here, high school coaches could drive, because they start later. But we didn't have a rate for that, so you can see we put in one. And basically, what we would do is we would pay them on the bus driver scale for those hours that they drove.
That would be, so a coach would be like a salaried position, that would be on top of their salary?
Yes, yes. And then, for our part-time temporary area, adventure club is very difficult to staff. And so sometimes, we do get what we call part-time or temporary. Sometimes it's college kids, sometimes it's high school kids. We did go up on the, not the high school rate, but we did go up on the other rate, $1, just to try and make sure we could fill those positions. And then the computer technician stayed the same, so I don't know why I have it highlighted, but anyway.
How do we solicit for, for the high school students? Do they know, they could get the part-time job?
What we're gonna do this year is we talked to Ms. Steele with CTE, and what they're really gonna try and do is see if they're able to schedule some of our students that are in the educational pathway.
Educational training.
Right, Mary? Schedule them where their last period, they would have internship or something?
Practicum.
Practicum, and they would be able to then go to an elementary and work there.
Cool.
Going on to our athletics at the high school. Our athletic trainer, we increased $1,500 from last year. And Triva, you might have to talk to these. On our football head coach, we went up $640. On our assistant head coach, we went up $240. On our first assistant coach, we went up $240. And on our assistant coach, we went up $140. And I thank y'all for making those round numbers. On our, at the basketball level, the assistant coach, we went up $500. And then, at the volleyball level, we actually decreased that one $1,020.
Wow. What we did is, we looked at the number of days that...
Your mic?
Oh, sorry. We looked at the number of days that the coaches coach. And in the past, the UIL regulations had been different for volleyball, and the number of days that they worked. So now that has changed, so that's why that was decreased. And the ones, the other ones that were increased were because of the numbers of days that they worked in their sport by UIL.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, going on to athletics at the middle school. Again, the trainer position is going up $1,500. In football, the assistant coach, actually football, basketball, I mean, baseball, softball, volleyball, basketball are all going up $500. Track, did that increase, or is that a new one?
So we had, at the middle school, they had three general assistants, where they could use anywhere. So we eliminated those three general assistants and added them under track, just so we know exactly where they're at and be accountable for them.
And then, when I looked, the soccer head coach didn't change, but the assistant went up $500. Going down to the spirit category, we are adding a district-wide teacher. And I think, Dr. Ball, correct me if I'm wrong, we're adding a position, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So what this would be is, this was another thing that existed back in Judson a long time ago, and many of you know the person that used to do this, but this was also eliminated. This one was not eliminated by me, I don't know why it was. But in order to support the cheer and have consistency across the district, not only at the high schools, but at the middle school, wanna be able to have a position that's really working at organizing and helping to support. I wanna make sure that, that I preface all of this in regards to why this is so important. All the, all the UIL activities, not just athletics, but all the UIL activities. One of the components that the board has also made a goal is the student piece, the student engagement component. And these are avenues that we're really working on in regards to getting more students engaged. And this is a conversation that I have with Coach Carles on a daily basis as to, what does student engagement really mean for us? Student engagement means better attendance, better academics, better discipline. Because in order to participate in these, you have to have all these things. So this goes hand in hand in regards to the success for our students. Coach Carles, I don't know if you wanna add something to any of this, or the board, if you have any questions to add?
So this district-wide spirit teacher would be kinda like our lead librarian, to help coordinate across the district in...
A little...
Similar, in terms of, would be to help coordinate the programs, look at what's happening with going from middle school to high school, that vertical piece, and looking for consistency on how we're doing things.
Right, making sure the cheer constitution is consistent. Even to the point of making sure that every middle school has a cheer group. So all, whether you're on the north or south side, there's equity, and you get to participate in all those things. Uniforms, the whole, the whole component of it. One of the other things that would be new to the, to the middle school component that we see the growth in regards is the baseball and the softball. We have not had this at Judson before. And we see that other school districts are getting this. Currently, right now, Harlandale and...
Harlandale and Comel are the only school districts that have middle school softball and baseball. And consistently, Comel is always at the state softball and baseball tournaments. And there's obviously a correlation there. But it also serves the students that, you know, aren't necessarily your best athletes and jump high and run fast. You know, it's about truly engaging every type of athlete.
Questions, comments?
Okay, moving on to the fine arts area on the next page.
Hold on.
Excuse me.
Hold on. Dr. Ball, tell me about the counselor stipends. They're in the athletics over here, but counselors and lead counselors. Are they part of the athletics, or is that academics?
So the top part was created new, so I think, we didn't used to have this, so I think that that's, it was just left in there, spacing, so we'll definitely move that.
That was probably my fault, sorry.
So it, yeah, we messed around with the template of making it clear.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, great catch, thank you. We'll definitely align that in the next, on the next page.
When we go to fine arts, really the only change there is we're adding a one-act play sponsor stipend. We have a theater director and assistant, but this is for the person that's responsible for the one-act play.
That UIL.
There's a lot of work that goes into that, like the Little Mermaid the other night. At our elementary school, and we had a stipend this year, I don't remember what it was called. I think we, it was kinda like the webmaster, and we still have the webmaster, but this JETIS is the person that is charged with, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sessi, integrating technology with instruction, right? Yes.
It used to be called the Judson Education Technology Specialist, it used to be called the JES.
Okay.
Now the I is added for innovation.
Okay, okay. But they're not a technician, they're not there to fix computers. They're there to help teachers, they're kind of like the trainer of trainers, to help teachers utilize techni... They're kind of like the trainer of trainers to help teachers utilize technology and the instruction.
That's a mouthful.
Yes. And then we added the elementary school National Honor Society Sponsor Stipend because we do have some of those in our elementaries.
And also because we're going to make that an expectation. Currently, right now, only three elementary campuses do that. Again, to provide the consistency, the equity and the fairness. All, next year, all our elementary campuses will be required to have that.
And Bill and Dr. Ball, in terms of looking at these stipends, I mean, we have reduced stipends in the past. In 2010, we had many more stipends that we used. I will be looking very diligently at stipends this year to insert more support our teachers in various ways, our employees in various ways. So the question I'll ask is, how do we know we're not just giving money away in terms of these stipends? So just like I asked, is there measurability on jobs and responsibility? Is there a way to measure the impact of those stipends in these positions? Like, for example, the National Elementary School Honor. What, what would that stipend do? Obviously, we're bringing someone in, but there's, there's a program, there's something they're doing. So are we going to look at that, see if this is yielding what we want?
I want to say, I, I think just having the program provides additional opportunities for students to be engaged and be involved in something. And, and, you know, we could measure that, did student engagement go up? But also, the, the main reason for the stipend is, is they're doing this on top of their regular job. And so the, the compensation is for what they do outside of their job.
Which is leading me to my next point and why I'm bringing this up. My commitment is to increase stipends for all extracurricular activities, for everything we do. Because every teacher that's doing more, not all of them are getting stipends for what that more might be. So if there's any time and place where that's happening, we need to take a look at that. So even if it's the chess club or whatever that, that is, we need to be committed. If we're going to do it for a group, and if our premise is that we're giving pay to those that are doing extra, that we do it for everyone. And that's something too, that we just need to evaluate what that expense would look like. And then going back to the original point, I hate spending money without knowing what the outcomes are. So if we do have a chess club stipend, for example, do we have enough people in that club to make it viable that we're using the stipend? So that kind of analysis needs to be continual. And so I don't know if we've done those type of continual assessments on stipends so that we can make sure they're being spent wisely. But I'd like to expand it to really support that premise that Dr. Ball mentioned, student engagement. So those that are involved in that engagement practice should be compensated in some way, and stipends is the best way to do that.
And we're constantly looking at that, and I don't want to go too far deep into this, but look at, and I don't have a page on here, but for example, we recently realized that the bowling club did not get a stipend. So you'll notice on one of the pages that, you know, bowling club now does get a stipend because you'll see the other clubs were getting stipends and the bowling was not. So we added that. I'm trying, I'm looking for the part that talks about the elementary UIL. I'm looking for that one.
That's on, I think, page, oh, they're not numbered. But it's for, it's the next page after the one we were just talking about, I think. On-
University, interclassical.
Yeah, it's, it's on the next page.
I must be on the wrong page.
I think you've gone too far.
Oh, okay. Here, yes, here it is. So this is another thing that we added last year. And we also added like some, some guidelines to it, that the campus must have a minimum of three events. So it's not just like, okay, I did one thing, you know. So we, we are looking at what you are saying, Mr. Masi, as well continue to, to look at that because we do want to compensate our teachers. But a lot of our teachers for those extra things are compensated by the hour. And I know somewhere on here, it does talk about our hourly rate. So we compensate them by the hour. It might not fit exactly into one of these compensations, but we compensate them for, for the hour. Just some, one example would be like the translation. The teachers that do those extra things of translating for us in regards to robotics. I think it was a year ago that we realized people were doing robotics, so we needed to, to compensate them for that. But at the same time, we wanted it to be tied into, how many students are you serving? So that's why you'll see on there that there's actually categories. Whether you serve one to nine, you get a certain amount, 10 to 14, 15 plus. So we, we will look and see if there's more that we could be missing. But another thing that we heard very loudly from our teachers was the reading academies. And the board approved that for us also. So we will continue to look at that, and if you know of any specifics, please feel free to, to let me know. But all of this also was looked at in correlation with the TASB study. And the, what the TASB said the market value was, what we should be look- So none of these stipends did we just pick, oh, let me randomly increase or decrease. It was all based on what TASB shared with us, and we're committed to do that, you know. It's just good information to, if we did every other year with TASB and said, okay, where, where do we stand right now? Where do we have to look at differently? So-
One quick question, Dr. Ball. On that UIL, it says on the teacher one, on the coordinator, it says campus must have a minimum of three events. But on the teacher one, it says maximum of three events per teacher, is that correct? Or that, should that also say minimum?
I think it should say minimum.
Okay.
We'll go back and look at that.
And just for clarification, for the, the payment of the stipends, is that given at the end of the year? Or how is that?
I think it's prorated throughout, but I could be wrong.
For UIL, we pay half in December and half in June. Because sometimes people do events in the fall, but they don't have anything in the spring. And so we, for UIL, we pay half and half. Most of the other stipends are part of their salary. And so they get paid out monthly as a, as a part of their deal.
Another example was when we realized that, about the Special Olympics and all the work that goes into that, you'll see that that stipend is added on there. One of the things that we heard a lot from our LSSPs. So you'll notice a stipend on, on there for that. But please, later on, Mr. Masi, if you hear or know of any, just let me know and we'll evaluate.
So are you going to go back and evaluate just in general, what, what that looks like? Or do I need to identify those areas?
If you could save me some time and identify them, by all means, please do.
Okay, I can, I can try, I obviously don't have a, a way to do that officially.
No, I mean, we're, we're doing it.
Unofficially, I can do that.
I mean, we're doing it, but I, I just thought if you already knew of some, you-
No, I mean, I don't know what we're paying stipends to. I just, the premise was, was if it's not here, I have to look at what we're doing. But I, I do get a sense that there are extracurricular engagement, student engagement activities that are not receiving support. So I'll verify on some of what I do know, but I don't know it entirely. So I just, I just wouldn't know. I, do we, I guess, do we give the stipend to speech, is it in here? Or?
The LSSPs, we do right here.
I mean, like speech competitions.
Speech and debate.
Oh, UIL?
That's part of UIL.
That's part of UIL.
Yeah, a lot of the things probably fall under UIL. Those are all the academic competitions and things like that.
I think maybe the, the, one thing that doesn't fall under here is the club activities that elementary teachers are doing. So if they have a gardening club, or if they're doing art club at their campuses. And the expectation has been, I think, for our elementary teachers that they need to be working and offering those after-school activities for campuses. Maybe they're doing a drama thing, or I've seen they have the culture club at some campuses. So I don't know if that's all included here, or if that is happening actually on paid time when they're with us. Because, you know, the, the day, school gets out and then there's some time afterwards where teachers are on the clock, but they don't have students. So, and I don't know about that.
We'll, we'll have a conversation with principals and make sure. I know, again, I'm having a hard time finding things right now, but I know that the art club, the art used to be on, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's on there.
Yeah, but I don't know that that's a club, maybe is that somebody who's coordinating for the art show?
Well, that is the person that should be running and providing the art in that, at the elementary campus.
Okay.
Right.
You know, so, but we'll, we'll definitely double check.
And I will do my part to help with that, where I know. But like I said, I think to Mr. Norrie's point, there are just pockets out there of, of our teachers that are doing more that aren't, aren't the- And then the last part of the stipends that's not here as well is, we hear this a lot, that we put a lot of emphasis on athletics. We have really healthy stipends that are quantifiable, because there's a lot of work that goes into athletics. But in the same vein, having a stipend based on over and above academic support for our-
Is that what the teacher incentive allotment would cover? Yeah, so that's something that the state is implementing that in, you can't get it now, but in two years' time, we would be eligible for.
Okay, is it a sizable amount?
Yes.
Very sizable.
And I guess we would put the framework together on what that would look like and so on.
So 2024 will be our data collection year. And that'll sort of give us a baseline of building a framework, a structure around not only supports for campuses, but then what that scale would look like.
And to piggyback on Miss Rodriguez's wonderful point earlier. If we do have an asset budget to implement sort of a framework for data collection purposes, we could even go forward quicker to have something to work with as we get to that year. You said two years from now. So we're just going to begin next academic year and one more academic year we have to wait before we receive funds. So just consider that a possibility that we could do something. But thank you for that.
May I?
Yes.
Just one thing to note about athletics, because I know that the perception. But I did a, my own Triva study, my health study.
I love that, thank you.
And the lowest paid head football coach out of all the school districts is that, is that Edgewood Independent School District. And their stipend is $14,500. And that we just proposed to push ours to $10,000. So our actual stipends are very much below. And even the $10,000 is not even bringing it to par with the smallest, or the lowest paying school district that I would say at Edgewood, you know. And I don't have that much success.
Well, we always want, I, I would always like to be competitive. I'm not saying that's a prerequisite, but-
No, but just so that you know, the perception is not the reality here.
Of course, of course, and that's why I mentioned that the perception is that we put a lot. But there is also, I will say, a lot of work that goes into athletics. And I appreciate and I love our athletics programs. But also from the academic part, what more can we do to also be robust? But again, in the same vein, as much as I want to spend money, I want to make sure that money is being utilized in the best way possible. So we have to be diligent of evaluating those expenses as we go forward. But thank you, I like, I like that.
Measure of success.
Yeah.
Okay, so like Dr. Ball said, we did increase the Special Olympics Assistant by $300 and the Lead by $300. They put in a lot of work on that. And then we did add the LSSP stipend. We didn't have that before.
And we're losing Coach Ed.
I know.
Retiring.
I am so upset about that.
Me too.
Going on, one of the things, when we looked at the TASB study. A couple of years ago, in budget cuts, what we did was we only give master stipends to teachers who are teaching in their field. And most districts give a general master teacher stipend. So what we would like to do is use some ESER funds to do the general master teacher, master's degree stipend. And then keep the, if you're teaching in your field, you would, you would, so you would get both, right? So everybody gets the, the general one. But then if you're teaching in your field, you would get that. And then we're also proposing for teachers to add a doctoral. So just to, to honor them for what they've gone through to get those degrees and what that brings to the classroom.
So if they have a master's degree, they would get $1,500. And then on top of that, if they're teaching, and I guess they're Phil, that Phil they got the degree in, they would get an additional?
$1,500. And then if they were a doctorate, they would get an additional $500.
Again, just valuing our teachers, letting them know that we appreciate that they continue to improve themselves because them doing that improves our kids' success. So I hope that, that this would be something the board would consider approval because it is a lot of time, money that people put into, to get these degrees. Any thoughts on this?
For elementary teachers, so I understand the master's degree in a science teaching field. Like I have a, if I had a master's degree in history and I'm teaching social studies, then like I get that stipend. But for elementary teachers, that's often like, would it have to be like in elementary education? Or does it have to be in a subject area?
It could be like reading, it could be curriculum, not even a math.
Okay, okay.
So there's, there's a lot of special ed. There's a lot of different avenues for elementary teachers to pursue that way also.
Just wanting to make sure that it would apply to them as well, not because they are more generalist.
And then we also, because testing coordinator is a lot of work, we added the elementary and middle school testing coordinator stipend.
Again, just valuing all the stuff that our staff does for us.
What I would say is I, I appreciate that. I think that is a very strong direction. We want obviously a higher level of educated employees in our district. But I would also just take this moment to also advocate, we also need to be responsive to any of their recommendations. They have masters, they have PhDs, they have a lot of ideas. And I say that because I hear from a lot of people with a lot of great ideas. I welcome you, Dr. Ball, I do feel that you are most receptive. But just keep a lens on, on those, that talent that we have that is seeing things and their education gives them a broader vision. So I, I always want to ensure that we are being very engaging in getting people and our employees to respond. Again, that moment, just because that felt like saying it, thank you.
And when I, and what I will do too is make sure that I structure my ESAC meetings a little bit differently in the future to make sure that I'm giving them the opportunities to truly not just tell me the concerns, but ideas, problem, problem-solving ideas. Because I think a lot of the ideas that we've had this year have come from listening to people and them truly sharing. And sometimes it's, it's easy to share the concern, but I want it to be, tell me the concern, but tell me your idea to solve it too.
You're right on, so, yeah, absolutely, thank you, Dr. Ball.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our miscellaneous high school. Again, the JEDIS stipend is there. And like Dr. Ball said earlier, we did add the bowling club there. And what we can do is we can, like Dr. Ball said, get with our principals and see what kind of clubs we have and see how they're doing those. And again, at the middle school, the JEDIS is, is one we added. And then, of course, the, the last one is our employee incentive, which was, this was part of the approval last night. We're just putting it in the stipend area so that it's spelled out. So one of the things when we visited with transportation was, and, and done this before in another district. We have two groups of employees. The only day they can take off is the day I need them to be here with the students. And that's transportation, bus drivers, monitors, and child nutrition workers. They don't, you know, they don't get days off other than they have to take off a day and it's a day that we have on the calendar, because that's what they get paid. And so, and it was pretty successful. And so what we agreed to do was, they get 10 personal days, just like all of our 10-month employees. And so we would allow them to take up to five. And they could pick, and they had to let us know in advance, the week of Thanksgiving, the week of Christmas, and the week of spring break. And they could choose to say, I want to get paid for these days. And it just, it helps put some money in their pocket, it's a decision that they make. And it's one of the things that was actually asked. And it's one of the things that was actually asked when we went to transportation. So this is kind of what we're outlining here is allowing them to use up to five personal days and get paid even though they're coming to work, right? So they'll get paid a few extra days.
I like, that's great.
Any questions on that?
That's great because, you know, the days that, if they have to take them off during the year, we need to find somebody to cover. And there's plenty of people who don't use their days.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. I think there was an ask to bring what positions were paid with federal funds and ESER funds. And so here are the ones, again, Carl Perkins is our federal CTE dollars. IDEA is our sped federal dollars. And then you can see Title I. And we have a few in Title II and Title III and Title IV as well. Questions on any of those?
The 17 or 20 or 30, I don't know. But the ones in, in terms of the speech, where are those positions? I have an impression that we should have about 17 of those that come out of either ESER or Title.
The speech, actually, because we get some reimbursement on SHARs, our speech is paid out of local sped dollars, not federal.
So when we look at positions a week or so ago, I think there were three vacant positions. And this is where all this started from. But, but we were told that there were a lot more than just three positions. And so my assumption is that they were being paid out of Title. You're saying local Title?
No.
Local?
So when we're talking about our speech, those are sped positions.
Okay.
Special education. And so we get an allotment from the state for special education, and then we get federal dollars on top of that. There's a program called SHARs. And if we are doing certain things with students, then we can get reimbursed for those costs. But we can only get reimbursed if they're paid out of local special education dollars. Because I can't double dip on the federal side. And so those would be paid out of local special ed dollars.
So I guess fundamentally, the reason why I started asking these questions was, what was our strategic focus? And so it appears that the arrangement of asking for reimbursement, because when we pay out of this bucket, whatever that is, it's a lot more than we pay for those that are on our payroll for that same position. Would I be correct to say that?
Oh, you're talking about contracted positions.
Yes.
I apologize.
Yes. Yeah, I'm looking for those contracted positions that are supposed to be out of Title that weren't on our payroll when you provided the information.
These are only employees' positions. This doesn't have any of the contracted positions. Wasn't able to pull that together for you.
In the last workshop, no?
Yeah.
I, we saw that recently.
Because there was only two listed, but there's, they're actually contracting out 23 at the tune of over $2 million.
Correct.
And that was the question I was asking, that I still don't understand is how is it better for us to be paying $2 million to contract these 23 speech specialists or whatever they are, rather than hiring them? And you said that it's because...
Because we can't hire them.
We can't hire them and pay them what the contractor is paying them.
That is correct. So we're adding the $2,000 stipend to try and help that. And maybe with the raise and the stipend on top of it, that will help.
Is it the benefits? Are they getting better benefits from the contract?
Well, again, remember, we talked about, some people go to contracting for a couple of reasons. Number one, they may not want to work full-time.
Okay.
They may want to work three days a week. You know, and, and like I said, the contractors, they pay well. They pay well.
Apparently so.
They don't have the overhead we have.
They're getting a lot of money from us, so I guess they can pay well.
Now, I, I did verify that I think only, if I'm correctly or wrong, I think only 12 of those positions come every day. The rest come intermittently.
Okay.
Right? I think they're assigned certain students and they don't come every day.
Okay.
And probably not all day.
No.
Correct.
Yeah, what I would say, Dr. Ball and Bill on, on this is that if we're already paying the contracted rate for their services, that we should just allocate that to positions. Because what's happening are the ones that are our employees, they, they take the burden of when these contractors don't finish their jobs, or if they walk away, or if they, so there is much more on their shoulders to ensure that we are in whatever those compliance measures are. So if we're already paying the contract labor rate, why don't we just transfer that to the payroll rate for everyone? Because apparently we just can't retain the talent. So God bless the ones that are employees that are with us. There's some loyalty to Judson, and I assume that's why they're with us. But we're, we're paying contractors more than they're making. So it just behooves us to make a transition to just pay that rate that we're paying contractors already for our employees to bring them in. Unless there is a strategic advantage for doing what we're doing, because we've done it for 10 years plus. That's what I'm trying to understand. If not, bring it over to payroll would be my suggestion.
I just wonder what it would do to everybody else when the SLP is making more than the principal and, you know...
They're making it now.
Exactly. Right? The way I see it is they're doing it now.
But they're not our employees.
Well, that's just, that's just the position though. It just commands that type of compensation, if we're going to be real about it. If not, contract them all. But that would put us in a position. So that's just my thought.
I can shed some light on that. SLPs are making right now, outside of the district, the contractors that we're working with, the contractor is paying them anywhere from $93,000 to $107,000.
A year.
Yeah, yeah, which is, which, we're paying that, right? That's coming from our...
No, that's what the contractor pays.
We pay the portion that they pay, they work for us.
They just pay the portion that they come work with our kids. They get from the contractor...
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I got it now.
The contractor is paying them $93,000, between $93,000 and $107,000 a year.
And they may be, may be working with our district and leave here and go work somewhere else. Okay, I get it now. I get it now.
Because they're hired by the contractor.
Okay.
When they come to our district, they're paid based on the number of hours they serve our kids.
Well, you do know that whatever they're making, they're talking about what they're making to our employees. And it's, it's a very demeaning thing to say, we're making a whole heck, a lot more than you are. Ha, ha, ha. And so we have to do something, again, for our employees here. But what I'm thinking more is, there is more of a commitment to those that are on payroll than on contract.
But Ms. Norris said, they may be working at three or four schools that day.
It, it's possible.
So they're, they may, you know, I might tell them, I'm getting paid $100,000 a year, but look, I come to Judson only for two hours on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. I leave Judson, I gotta go over to Northside somewhere, and I gotta go Southside somewhere. So now I better understand it. I see the picture now. Now it makes sense.
And, and I don't see the picture. So I still want the information because I want to be able to see it right in front of me of what they are. So I would just ask you specifically, Dr. Ball, Bill, I'd like to see what we are paying in those positions. Look it over. That's Dr. Dr. Hough, and thank you for your explanation on that. That was helpful. But I still feel fundamentally, there's a, there's something wrong if we're not able to transition from contract to payroll employees. There's just something fundamentally wrong there. And Dr. Ball, you, you may have a valid point with them making more than some of our principals if we pay them at that rate. But I want to see it. I want to understand it for myself. And so seeing that information, I thought I would see it here and it would sort of, it's not here. So now I'm like, where's the information? So I want to see what we're paying those 17 people under contract and whatnot, and also our employees, because now I want to really see what that differential looks like so that we can formulate a strategy, Dr. Ball.
Now, what I can, what we can do is, I won't be able to share with you, because I don't know what, oh, what we pay those people.
I can tell you what our contract is for, and then that company pays those people.
Sure. And that's, that's fine.
Okay. Because what, what the company and how they pay them and...
Whatever, it's their arrangement. I get that.
Yes.
But our, our arrangement and what we're doing...
Is a flat contract rate.
So, yeah, once I see that, I'll feel, I'll feel, I will see it.
Yes, of course. We'll be very transparent. We can show you what we pay those contracts. Does that make sense?
I get it now.
Mary?
I thought we just saw that.
I, I could have sworn we did too, but I can't find it.
I was trying to, I can't find it either.
I don't remember.
It's okay. We'll, we'll get it again.
I think the example we brought was for our grounds crew contracting, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's what it was.
And, and like I said, we, we are trying to make sure that we provide you everywhere we contract. Now, you know, contract is a different term because, I mean, we may contract somebody to come in and design our marching band deal, right? And, and so, I mean, we do contract a lot, but it's, a lot of it's just little stuff like that.
Very specialized, one-time work.
And I would say, the strategy behind contracting is, number one, you don't have the skill in-house to do it. You don't have the number of people to do it. And as the need goes up and down, you're not having people that aren't being productive that are on your payroll. So, you know, if I don't need you today, I don't call you. And so I think that is the strategy we're trying, but for contracting in some areas. In sped, the impetus for contracting is, they can make more. Some of them do not want to work in schools. They want to work in hospitals. They want to work in something else. And so that's why they leave us sometimes.
Another example that I would like to give is, let's say I'm the contract at LSSP, or SLP, sorry. I could make $100,000, but I'm, I might work two days for a public school and then the other days at a hospital or at a rehab. And that's really why I'm making $100,000. So I might share with you, I'm making $100,000, but it could also be because of the other work I do. But bottom line, we'll be happy to share with you what we pay for contract.
Yeah, that, that would make me feel like I can see it clearly.
Absolutely.
Right now, I still have a lot of questions about that. And, but more importantly, just because I want to see what our strategy will be ultimately for bringing more to our payroll. We, we just have fundamentally been doing this for 10 years, at least I know, where we're using a reliance on contract.
Right. And, and the other thing, and I, I won't remember the exact number, they used to be on a different pay and we, pay grade, and I know that we've put them, now they are at 507.
Yes, we moved the, we moved the SLPs, the occupational therapists, and the diagnostician.
You see, so they, they used to be right here, and now they're at the 507. So we haven't increased, well, the board will, I'll be asking the board to approve this. So that's one strategy, and the stipend was a second strategy.
And, and so whatever those loyalties are from our current employees, I appreciate that personally as a board member. But we need more of them. And, and we really need to figure out why they're not coming. We know why. But we just now, I need to understand and make some recommendations based on the information you provide.
Right. And, and this was something that I, I would say back since September, maybe we started talking about with a group of, of staff members that they came to me. And this was pointed out to me, so this is going to be important for the board.
We have, we've done that before in the past, even before your arrival, where we've had to adjust those positions because we need to stay competitive and we need to compensate them for what they're doing. So I'm satisfied. I just bring the information.
We will, absolutely.
I can feel better.
Absolutely.
Okay. The next, the next page is the positions that we're paying with ESER. And remember, these dollars are going away in two years. And so we have 310 positions that are paid with ESER.
Which one is the principal one? I see one principal.
So when you see one, it's pretty much going to be Converse. Because we were paying the extended day at Converse, what we did is figure out a percentage and rather than going in and recoding every single employee, what we did is we picked employees out of each function and we paid them 100% out of ESER. And so that's kind of how we did that. So we, we ended up with the percentage that we needed. And so that's a lot of the, the one specialty areas you see that just have one person, a lot of that is Converse.
And we're paying three police officers out of ESER?
Yes, sir. We did add, actually, I think we added four positions, but they've only filled three. That was to assist with the, the high school and the safety issues.
If you recall, we had some conversations with the board in regards to, this was early on, some changes that needed to be made to address the safety.
Yes, I remember.
We had a lot of fighting going on.
And there's, those hall monitor positions that we talked about that we can't...
We included those.
That, including where in here?
No, it, there were back in...
They're in the, they pay 200, probably 203, I believe. We have hall monitors.
Okay. In the future, if it doesn't work or we have them filled, we may want to just put it into additional officers on the campus. Just because if we're having the turnover, I think we're 36,000 per position or 30,000 per position, maybe we can get two more officers for the campus.
Instead of a hall monitor?
Instead of, because at this point, we're just not retaining that. I think you mentioned that they, they leave. So we may want to consider just shifting that over to police officers at those campuses because we're having more trouble at the high schools and middle schools. So at least two more there. We have three hall monitors at one high school. Maybe we split it and we have one officer at Wagner and one at Judson. Hopefully get one of veterans. But anyway, just an idea, you know, to, to shift that.
Right. And we also want to look at this also at, at middle school because...
Yeah.
We want to make sure that we help our, support our middle school also.
Yeah. Just, just to reiterate that fact, I mean, I have two, a nephew and a niece that are middle schoolers in our district and, oh, I've got to do my job. How's school going? Oh, we love it. But you know what? There's too many fights on this campus. And so, again, perception real and I, I don't know. I don't have the data to prove it, but if both of my, the different middle schools are saying there's a lot of fights, then that means there's, there's issues. And honestly, again, I don't know because I haven't asked you to quantify it or validate it, I should say.
An out-of-control hormone.
But they said the, the principal at Woodlake even was injured in breaking up a fight. So we, we didn't get that information. We don't know it, but somehow there's still issues. And if our principal is taking a slap or a, we have to do something. I mean, and so I take that input from them pretty seriously. But again, just to the fact, again, I like your train of thought. It may be an ESER fund related issue, since we're coming out of the pandemic, that we do something now. And so that's why I said, when we mentioned about budgets, I said, we haven't really talked about safety. This is still something on my mind that we need to finish before we, we get through this budget.
And, and you know, I'm happy that you have here because I'm...
I'm also, a lot of some, the recommendations have come from our students. You know, I meet with the students once a month and they have given us great information from our dress code to the cafeteria, just a lot of ideas. I then shared that idea with Coach Corales. She put a group together of students that she meets with. I gave Lacy Gosh the information, and she's going to put, to group together next year for technology. And I think that is what's important for us is, that is why we're here, is our students. And we need to hear directly from them. So we're establishing different avenues for, for them to, you know, to talk to one of us around this table. Because these are the individuals I work with closely every single day I meet with them, to hear from them, what is it that our kids need? And we get to hear the different perspectives from, from all of them. So just know that we're gonna, we enhanced it this year by adding this component and and we'll enhance it again next year with another layer.
Well, I will say that when the legislature enacted the school districts to have a student board member, I kind of say, that won't work for us. But when I spent time at Alamo Colleges, we did have a student trustee, non-voting, but it was very valuable. I, I have started to think through the idea of having a trustee that's a student that would be a representative, somebody that would be a senior that would spend the year and really be a non-voting student on this board to continue that line of thought where we have engagement from our students. So, at a later time, when I get all my thoughts together, I'll bring it before so we can talk about that possibility.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's really the stipend and substitute. We've gotten some feedback. Again, we're going to go back, put this together. And at the 31st, we will bring the entire comp plan for an action item. Looking at where we are year-to-date, again, revenue is trending well. Again, we've just, the 58 hundreds, Scott, we need to get, quit using numbers and put names. So, 57 is our local dollars, 58 is state dollars, and 59 is federal dollars. And you can see our state dollars are behind. But again, we talked about that payment schedule and we just started receiving those dollars again last month. So, that will increase. Our expenditures are basically right where they need to be. We still have a lot of encumbrances out there. So, we'll still be writing checks for stuff that has been ordered and hasn't come in yet. Moving on to the child nutrition budget. Again, they are trending very well. Again, a lot of this is due to everybody's eating, right? And next year, that changes. And so, this year, they will end up putting some money in their fund balance, which they need to. And next year will be a much more challenging year as we go back to the National School Lunch Program.
And then just keep in mind when bills start challenging, we all have to do our part to inform with parents because some of them will be upset. Well, why? You know, it used to be free. This isn't anything that Judson ISD did or wants to do. We're bound by these regulations too.
And so, what, I, I'm forgetting what changed.
So, we've had free breakfast for everybody, right? And that will continue. But when ESER came along, I mean, when the pandemic came along, the government, in an effort to help families, said, okay, doesn't matter whether you meet the income requirements to be free and reduced, everybody's going to eat free lunch. And so, there's, there, there's no requirement.
I see. But I thought we had that before the pandemic. But you're saying that was new in the pandemic for our district?
No, you had to, yeah, it was only breakfast. You had to fill out the, the form and then we evaluated based upon your income.
I understand.
Yeah, several, several days I had to rush up to Judson and grandson got lunch.
Do what? Right. We, we do have, I think, 11 schools that are called CEP campuses. And so, when the percentage gets around 88, 89% free and reduced, we can declare them a CEP. And so, everybody at that campus eats free. But it's a calculation of, can we break even?
Okay.
What is CEP?
I don't remember. It's community, community eligibility program, yes. Thank you, Sessi. On our debt service side, you'll see that our revenues have exceeded what we expected and our expenditures exceeded too. And the main thing here is this was the defecence. Again, this will be corrected when we bring the budget amendment next month. Again, no change to our assumptions that we talked about last Monday, I think. Monday, right?
Yes. Can I just ask, I don't even remember if we went over this or if I asked before, but that's on an assumption of an ADA percent of what for on our enrollment? 90, 87, the, the ADA? So, the ADA number is based on?
About 91. Is that what it is?
And what are we running right now?
Friday's about 88.
Okay.
Most days around 90 to 91.
Why is Friday so?
Everybody takes a three-day weekend.
You go back to my thing of going to school four days a week. See, Ed, they can have every Friday, Saturday, Sunday off.
Yes, ma'am.
Or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, whichever one they want. Four day a week.
You know, I, there's so much controversy about that. The, the hard part about that is.
Yes, a lot of, of our families do work. So, as, as wonderful as it sounds for the, for the adults, my worry would be that if it's an adult-driven decision, because I feel I would be sending kids to be at home by themselves because most likely their parents are going to be at work. Then I worry, I'm taking away two, two more meals for them. So, though it sounds like such a great, I, I'm not, I don't know. I, I have so many worries about what it would do because the reality is parents have to work. Parents have to work. And also with the, the need of having them in our buildings to close the gap, I, I don't know if, if this would be the right thing to do at this time. Comments, thoughts?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
That's a lucky parent.
Don't go, don't go to Chicago. They get ready to tighten it up in Illinois. Four days a week.
Four days a week.
Four days a week.
Well, they must have a way to provide childcare on that other day. And that's a whole nother nightmare.
Come on, they got all some. Who provides it in the city?
Well, you'll, that's different, though, that you'd have to, I mean, that, that has, that, I'm sorry. It's not different. That has been an expectation for years and years and years and years. And so, you would be looking at a new paradigm for childcare providers and the need there and whether they could step up and have those things for. And, and parents take advantage of our adventure club during the summer quite a bit.
Yeah.
You know, quite a bit because they do need a safe place for their childhood. If it's not adventure club, it's one of our other clubs or the fine arts program or summer school, we'll, we'll have a good percentage of our students back in the building. And, and they're looking for programs, whether it's the athletic, you know, camp to send them to, fine art. They're, they're looking for places to send their kids. And that's another area that we're going to also continue to grow with the Boys and Girls Club and, and having those opportunities to keep them engaged, keep them busy so they're being productive. And, and at the same time, we're infusing them with, whether it's character education, closing the gap, leadership skills, and, and working to, like Mr. Macias says, make, make this the premier school district.
Mm, destination.
So, the, the, just for this discussion, the estimated tax collection, I think I asked last meeting, 99% seems to be the, the consistent final figure?
Yes, sir. If you look in our audit, it, it, years ago was 100%. Then it dropped and it ran 99. I think last year was 98 point something. I don't remember the exact number, but it's around the 98, 99%. The one assumption that we added here is the bottom one we did. We're going to add $250,000 in for the internal audit department based upon the discussion that was had at the board meeting. I, I don't think we've put that into our allotments yet, so we'll have to go back and, and get that done. But we, we will add that, those dollars in.
And later on, it's just to put this out there. I would like clarification from the board in regards to what my, if there's an expectation for me to do that or something like that later on.
I was going to talk to Ms. Rodriguez, but I'm glad you mentioned it. I, I'm going to recommend, Ms. Rodriguez, that we have a co-chair approach with helping you get to this next step with the internal audit function. Obviously, I, I'd like to volunteer to be part of that. But another board member, if it's Ms. Rodriguez as board president or Mr. Diaz as vice president, that we would then begin to have that dialogue. But certainly that, we need to give you that support.
Yes.
I concur. And I'll talk to Ms. Rodriguez offline on that.
Please, because I don't, I, I didn't want to feel like you all had wanted me to do something that I wasn't doing. And so, with the, posting a position, looking to see, so if you all could just let me know whenever, what my next steps are, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, the, the plan naturally is to get more factual, factual information so that we as a board can consider those next steps. So, before we put out a job script, we want to understand what the scope would be. And so, there's still a lot of that that needs to be done first.
Right. I just don't want you to feel that I dropped the ball. So, just task me with what you'd like me to do and we will get it done.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Again, just, I, I think the board should be proud of the tax rate history. Since 2018, we have dropped the tax rate every single year and we're proposing dropping it five cents this year.
With, without that adversely affecting our bottom line, like if we decrease the tax rate?
Yes, sir. Just because the values went up so much and, and.
Because I'll tell you, right now, the, many folks don't see that correlation. They see that their taxes went up.
Right.
And we still get hit. So, I'm hoping, but why we, just leave it where it is and keep moving forward. But, but they're not seeing that.
No, I understand. And, you know, like I said, we control the tax rate. We don't control the value evaluation.
Exactly. And if you look at our bond, we lost our bond, not because it's our fault, because those appraisals went up. So, at some point, I, I'd like to look at, at something.
If we kept our tax rate the same, would that put us into recapture, though? Or is there like?
Right. By law, that, remember, there's two sides to the tax rate. There's M and O. And the tier one M and O is actually given to us by TEA. That's a new one from House Bill 3. And, and it's because if our values go up more than 2.5%, it's, gets compressed. So, that means they, they calculate a tax rate and drop it. So, you can see last year, our tier one M and O was .8282. This year, it's projected to be .8046. We won't know exactly until we get our certified values in July and then I send those to TEA and then they have them backed me by August 5th. And then, of course, we have the, the tier two of five cents. We cannot exceed that without a TRE election. Now, if, if we kept our tax rate the same, then we could do additional defecence of our bonds. That's really the only thing we could do. I mean, we could pay them off ahead of time. And at 122, we will do some defecence. At 127, of course, we could do more. And that's, if the board would like to look at that, let me know.
But we couldn't put it into program cost?
No, ma'am. So, looking at, at where we're at, I, looking at where we are this current year, I think we're going to put a little over $3 million into fund balance. And again, we have not updated these numbers with some of the new allotments and things that have been added. We're still showing the $22 million in deficit for next year. That number probably will go up based upon some of the decisions we've made over the last week. And so, if, if everything happened perfectly, at the end of next year, we would have an $87 million fund balance.
And Bill, the reason why it's important, again, to figure out what our average has been for unfilled positions, because I do, I very rationalize this in my mind that even this $22 million deficit, if 7 million goes back in, it's really a $14 million deficit. If we hit our 99 percentile for enrollment or the rate, that's another 1.3, I think you said it typically equates to. So, that gets reduced. So, we're not looking at 22 and we're looking clearly more like at 14 million in deficit. And then with an increase, if we grow the fund balance. So, I'm just trying to figure out exactly what that net would be when it's all said and done. And it's going to be less than 22. And so, I'm trying to convey that to my community so they understand there are pockets of revenue that are coming back. So, for me to be confident with that, I need to know what those trends look like. That's why I'm asking for that information.
And, and I, I understand we'll get you those numbers, the, the ones we have and can get to you. But I think based upon the decision of the boards, the great compensation plan that we're putting forward, I think a lot of those unfilled positions are going to get filled.
That's a good thing because the, the other part of this was that we have, I'm going to put a lot of faith in Dr. Ball and you for telling me, if we fill those teacher positions, we won't need the teacher aides. So, that is something, why I didn't push for it. I didn't add it on to the amendment for us to vote on because I'm putting trust that that's going to happen. I'd like to see every teacher position filled so that we can do that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Guidry, but I think the vacancy report is in the personnel report every board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So, you have that report every board meeting?
Yes.
So.
I'd love to know how many people left to come back in the next.
Because, Miss Eaton did ask, and if anybody retired or resigned and wants to come back, they can come back. So, just FYI, in case there's somebody out there that maybe saw that, then, oh, one, one more year, two more years, right?
Let's see, oh, hey.
Yes.
Come on, man.
So, we'll let you know if we have anybody wants to resend their resignation. Wouldn't that be nice?
I know one is to be.
Okay, so the main thing is that on May the 31st, I'd like to, but starting this page and then the other pages forward in regards to the, the scales and things like that, that would be major to take for approval on the 31st. So, please take this home with you and look this over to include all the stipends and then continue to send me questions or comments so we can get that in Friday notes to you guys so you will feel ready on the 31st.
Would that also include the, the proposed changes in the CNI department?
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay. So, we would discuss that part of it, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I just want to, Scott, I know you've been taking notes. Let's clarify what's been asked for tonight to make sure we have it. I mean, not tonight, today.
It feels like that already.
That haircut Mitch do up. That's what I.
Testing.
So, you want me to reiterate our, sorry?
No, I want him to read what we've written down and then if we miss something, please let us know.
So, I've got, look at insurance items. Possible employee payment options. I've got a fund balance list of vacancies, if we can find those. And let's see, I've got, look at ESER funds for additional opportunities. Continue with the stipends. I've got.
I know one of the items, Mr. Macias, you, you brought up was safety. Can you give us more guidance on? I mean, I know you talked about maybe some additional police officers or something. But is there other things that you're thinking? Because that's a big category.
It, it is, it is. And I, I trust that you as, as experts in this area would be able to develop some more ideas. I, I have some, so I'll share some of those ideas. But obviously, having a, a stronger presence either from our law. But obviously, having a stronger presence either from our law enforcement, possibly contracting, although I've been hearing that that's not a good idea to contract with the sheriffs. But, and we try not to contract so much. So basically, hall monitor is not working, so something else. So safety in general, the bottom line would be this, that our staff and students feel safe and that we control the amount of violence that we're seeing. And not that it's rampant everywhere, but even if it's one instance where a teacher's being slapped, that's one too much. And as we know through social media, it's being promoted even more, so it seems like it's more. So safety in that term would be, what can we do?
So to clarify, it sounds like actually what you might be asking for is what is our strategic plan around increasing the safety? Like, what are the measures that we've put in place? Because I think the ask for Bill and his team would be different. It's like, we're either adding money or we're not. And so it sounds like what you want is more programmatic.
It's both because I want to get beyond the discussion and I want to actually see something. That's why I suggested just eliminate the hall monitors, put police officers on the campus and just do something. But I would also ask, too, that if it means greater training for teachers, because again, some of our previous surveys have talked about the classroom management part is the hardest function for a teacher. So if that's part of the strategy, but, you know, we have to do something. And so sitting and, that's what I'm looking for. Ideas on your end even. And the best group that I feel is in position to give you recommendations are teachers in the classroom.
Absolutely.
So I trust that you'll ask them to figure out what they would need in situations where they feel there's something. Quicker, rapid response if they hit the button. I mean, whatever that might be. I don't do day-to-day engagement in the classroom. So I don't know, but I certainly feel that there's opportunity there.
Could I make a suggestion, Mr. Macias?
Sure.
Because I wonder if a starting point might be like perhaps Dr. Ball writing a memo to us and including it as part of, like, maybe a separate part of the Friday notes of like, here are the interventions that we have done this year around safety and here are the things we might be doing so that we can all read that and then maybe ask our more specific questions. Because I think like, my fear is that, as clear as you're trying to be, and I'm not saying you're being vague or unclear, I think you're being pretty clear, but we don't have a very specific starting point and then it can turn into this presentation that is super long and still not getting at the things you want because we don't, we're steering. So maybe that might be a starting point to ask very targeted questions to be able to get. Would that be?
I mean, I'm always agreement, we're not going to solve the problem at one instant.
Right.
It is a continuum.
Yeah.
So in the short run, I would say, make a decision on hall monitors and police officers in the short run. In the long-range run, let's look at what those things need to be. But during that process, do discovery with our employees and teachers about what that would look like so we can enter next year ready to go. So I would say that combination would be satisfactory.
They definitely have to talk to the principals because I'm sure every little fight that breaks out, they not calling up here going, "Dr. Ball, we had a fight today." So, you know, but the principals are aware, you know, so they could at least give Dr. Ball feedback.
Well, and to speak about how this ties into a student's social emotional well-being. We had a student address at this last board meeting with some really, yes, very concerning remarks. But I felt that bullying was in there. And so we have a systematic issue that needs to address student and employee safety. So you're right, Ms. Rodriguez, this is something we need to begin to embark upon. But from a budgetary standpoint, and right now, since we were talking compensation and budget, adding some things in now that we can turnkey on. So safety is an issue. But clearly, I feel there are some things within ESER that we can implement now. And so we have money in our social emotional bucket for ESER, so look at that to see what we can put the gas on to bring in.
So the specific ask for the short term is hall monitors and police officers?
Right now, that's the short answer.
I see you, I'm sorry. You pull, I'm sorry. You pulled those two cars, those two little girls?
Yes, staff has already contacted them, absolutely.
That was, that was hard to sit in this room.
Yes, no, that.
I ain't gonna lie, I was about to butt walk out my chair.
I want to, I don't want to discuss this in an open meeting. So, okay.
I just know she's looking into it and she's gonna.
And that's a fair question.
Do you feel clear, Mr. Atkins, then, and Dr. Ball, on Mr. Macias's ask around hall monitors and police officers and what you could bring to maybe the May 31st meeting?
Yes.
All right, so we've just finished with item three. Moving on to item four, program review. I do want to do a time check here. So right now, we're at 10:45 and recognizing that we have a hard stop. And I know how much time has gone into creating this binder and I also want to give value to that time. So one suggestion could be that we slate these out over the next three meetings to make sure we have time. Or we could maybe, if there's one we could do now, and maybe, but is 45 minutes enough to do the presentation and have time for questions?
My suggestion that I had, again, can I borrow this? I want to also give the board time to look through all of this. So one suggestion that I had had for Ms. Rodriguez that, this gives board time to look at this, come prepared with questions, that we do curriculum and instruction on May 31st. Finance, I think it's going to be on all of them, to be quite honest. We're going to continue to talk about finance, you know, until we pass the budget. Then the 30, July 31st, and I could have gotten the wrong date. I don't remember what our meeting date is in July. In July, though, we do human resources. And then A and B, I could easily do those at a regular board meeting. So that was my suggestion, but I certainly want to hear what the board would like for me to do right now. I don't want anybody to feel rushed. And again, the board didn't have this to peruse until just today because we, staff, it was a very busy week, so it was a very busy week.
And so I like the dates. I think that works. It gives us time to be able to kind of review this and then if we have any questions on those dates that you proposed, then we'll be able to follow through with that.
Right. It gives everybody time to look at things and ask questions, you know, in regards to what we present.
How do you feel about that, Mr. Macias? I know you were the one that really wanted to have the program review today.
I am pleased that we're moving in a direction that will bring back these program reviews. They are later. My intention is to have them in February next round. But for the sake of your question, I'm comfortable with reading this and coming back and I like the proposal ideas. But to reiterate, too, if a board member wants to see a particular program, we can get additional information from any of them. So I would say, too, that we've spent two hours and 45 minutes talking about very important things, that we use that energy to look at this going forward. We hold the meetings at that time. I may ask for some additional information as we're looking through here. That will be helpful for me. And then we just move forward after all of that. So I would concur that we go that direction.
Okay, great. So I'll reread those dates.
And one of the dates I missed up, the June date.
July 31st?
Yeah, I missed up.
That should be June 31st?
There's not a June 31st. June 30?
Yeah.
June, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's our regular.
I'll be here then, 31st.
It's our regular June meeting.
Our June meeting is not June 31st?
No, I can't, I couldn't.
Are you talking about a special meeting or the?
The regular board.
Regular. June is, June meeting will be on the 16th?
16th.
16th.
So which one do you want to do?
Okay, so I'll read this off so everybody has it. So curriculum instruction, we'll cover on May 31st. Finance, June 8th.
Because that was a meeting date, right?
Yes. And human resources on June 16th. And so board members can prepare themselves accordingly. And I would encourage everybody to send questions in advance where possible and that can help us also save time in the presentations and be really targeted in what we're looking for. All right, so that was item four, A, B, and C. And then discussion items and reports, discuss the restructure of board advisory committees for 2022, 23 school year. And then discuss facilities assessment timeline. Are those also something you're suggesting?
Yes, specifically because I'd also like to have everybody there.
Yes, yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think, too, that the board advisory committees in particular seem to coincide with the monitoring calendar and our board meeting structure. So that makes sense to push that out. So those were probably on here just in case, but makes sense to do that. All right, so that gets us to item six on the agenda, which is adjournment, unless anybody had other questions.
I just want to thank you all, the staff, you guys, Dr. Ball, thank you. You guys, I know this has been like crazy for you all. I mean, all I had to do is show up and y'all give me stuff and tell me, and ask questions. But y'all put, y'all been, y'all been doing it. Y'all been humping.
Yeah.
And I am very lucky to have remaining staff. This is not me, this is my staff. The staff is newly remarkable.
And I'd like to commend you for finding those people and putting them in the positions that they're in to be able to bring all this wonderful information and help move us forward because I really see that we're on a great trajectory and I'm very excited about where Judson ISD is going. So kudos to you and to everyone.
I've been getting some good questions about our district. And it's not because of the pay raise or anything, but, you know, people.
People are noticing.
Yeah. Yeah, we gonna be that destination district.
Yes, go ahead. All right, so we will adjourn this meeting at 10:49.